All right, it is 6:00 PM on November 18th, 2025, and I welcome you to your City Hall. I'm going to call the City of Iowa City meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Alter.
Here.
Burgess.
Here.
Harmsen.
Here.
Mo.
Here.
Sala.
Yeah.
Teague.
Here.
Y-line.
Here.
All right, well, again, welcome to your City Hall, those that are in person and those that are joining us virtually. We're going to move on to proclamations. 2A is National Native American Heritage Month. Whereas long before European settlers arrived in North America, Native Americans, Alaska natives, and Native Hawaiians had established thriving societies founded upon principles that continue to inspire us today, including sustainability, community, and respect for the natural world. And whereas despite centuries of injustice, broken treaties, discriminatory policies, and other harmful governmental actions, Native Americans, Alaska natives, and Native Hawaiians have continued to demonstrate resilience, leadership, and generosity, contributing in countless ways to the growth and success of the United States. And whereas we honor the Iowa people, whose ancestral homelands include the area now known as Iowa City, and we celebrate the enduring connection between art, land, and community that they and other indigenous people uphold. And whereas we recognize and honor indigenous peoples for their vital role in shaping the history, culture, and fabric of our society. Now therefore, I Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim November 2025 to be National Native American Heritage Month. And to receive this is Marie Krebs, Great Plains Action Society. You're the executive director, correct?
No, I'm Protective Sacred Director.
All right, there we go.
It's always an honor to stand here in our wonderful community. Thank you to the city for being so inclusive. I just want to recognize some of the nations that have, that belong to Iowa or migrated around Iowa, the Omaha Nation, Musqueke, Ato, Ponca, Winnebago, and of course, the Iowa, which we're named after. Plus many others who've migrated and been forcibly removed, such as the Kickapoo. There is one thing I do ask that y'all think about today. We have here pictures of our Native American folks, South American folks, and our Latin American folks. My ancestors are indigenous to New Mexico. Abby's ancestors are indigenous to Mexico. This time last week, literally this time last week, Great Plains Action Society received a call about a woman named Letitia Jacobo, who had been detained in Des Moines. She had been detained and was going to be deported. That's problematic in general. But Letitia is a member of Arizona's Salt River Pima Maricopa Community. She's Native American. So as you look at me and you look at Abby, as you look at our relatives here, I just ask that you consider that we did not cross borders. Borders crossed us. And I ask that if you're going to stand in solidarity with indigenous peoples, please stand in solidarity with indigenous peoples, not some indigenous peoples, all indigenous peoples. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks for accompanying Abigail. Yes. All right, we're going to move on to our consent agenda, items three through seven. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
Don't move. Sala.
Second. Mo.
All right. Anyone from the public like to discuss topics on our consent agenda? If you're online, please raise your virtual hand. See anyone in person or online? Counsel discussion? Roll call, please.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Sala.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Y-line.
Yes.
All right, motion passed at seven to zero. We're on to item number eight, which is community comment. This is an opportunity for the public to come out on items not on our agenda. The council cannot engage in discussion or debate during, due to open meeting laws. I want to see the hands of how many individuals that are present in council chambers that would like to speak today. Okay? All right. You'll be given three minutes each. I ask that you, there is in the back a little name tag that you can pre-fill out and drop it in the basket. So I invite people to go to the back. When you come up, please state your name and city you're from, and you'll be given three minutes. Welcome at this time. If, yeah, come on up. And there is a sign-in if you need to sign in up at the desk. Welcome.
Thanks. My name is Megan Wallen-Weider. I'm from Iowa City. I am the president of the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Local 183, which represents a substantial number of workers here at the City of Iowa City. I come bearing a letter from the AFSMI Local 183 Executive Board. The American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Union, AFSMI, Council 61, including AFSMI Local 183, represents nine bargaining units, including hundreds of public employees who keep Iowa City, Corleville, Tiffin, and Johnson County running safely and smoothly. We stand firmly for the dignity, rights, and safety of every person in our community, including our immigrant neighbors. And we urge the Iowa City City Council to adopt the Fourth Amendment resolution proposed by Escuchamivos in its full and intended form. Our members work daily in public buildings and shared community spaces. We are responsible for keeping these environments safe, welcoming, and orderly for all who walk through the door. To do that, employees must have clear protections that defend our constitutional rights when outside agencies, especially those with a history of overreach and community harm, attempt to act without proper legal authority in our workplaces. We also need the practical measures outlined in the original resolution. Thorough employee training, clear signage marking restricted areas requiring a judicial warrant, secure facilities, and reliable enforceable protocols that protect both staff and the public. These are not political issues. They are fundamental expectations for safety, human dignity, and lawful practice. Many city employees have expressed deep concern and confusion about how to respond if ICE enters their workplace. No employee should be left to navigate chaotic, intimidating, or legally questionable encounters with federal agents without guidance or support from their employer. That uncertainty threatens employee safety, undermines public trust, and erodes our ability to serve the community. AFSMI Local 183 urges the council to join other cities that have already adopted strong protections to keep workers and community members safe. We fully support the resolution as originally proposed by Escuchamivos. Protecting our workplaces also protects the immigrant families who are part of the fabric of Iowa City and the broader community that we are proud to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Alejandra Escobar, and I stand here as an immigrant, a mother, a community organizer, and a resident of Iowa City. Every day, many of us wake up with a quiet fear that shadows even the most ordinary moments. We got to work. We take our kids to school. We attend community events. But in the back of our minds, there is always the question, is it today the day I'm going to be racially profiled and taken by ICE? For many of us, this fear comes from real experiences. We have seen our members be taken at their workplace in violent ways. We have seen our members being detained at their ICE check-in. We have seen our members being questioned without explanations. Escuchamivos represents the voice of 500 immigrants who have held the line while being targeted. We have marched, spoken, cried publicly, and showed courage that no community should have to demonstrate just to show their value. And yet, despite all of this, we watch decisions stall, not because the need is unclear, but because the politics around us are louder than the suffering of the people living through this crisis. We deserve acknowledgement that immigrant families are facing violence right now. Not someday, not in theory, but now. I'm here tonight because I'm sick and tired of watching the immigrant community be harassed, mistreated, and forced to be the ones constantly holding the line while others in power stay silent. When conflicts of interest overshadow human suffering, the community that already carries a heavy weight starts carrying a heavier one. I'm asking for honesty, moral clarity, and for leaders who can put the well-being of an entire community above the comfort of political relationships. My hope is that you councilors understand that the Fourth Amendment is not a special protection we invented. It is already the law of the land. What gives residents a false sense of security is not clarifying constitutional rights. What creates confusion and danger is failing to communicate those rights, leading people to fear interactions with local government, or worse, to believe they have no rights at all. This resolution does not promise protection from federal immigration enforcement. It does not offer legal status. It does not misrepresent what the city can or cannot do. What it does is ensure that every person knows and understands the rights they already have under the Constitution. Knowledge is not false security. Knowledge is power. If we shy away from affirming constitutional rights because we worry someone might notice, then we must ask ourselves, what does that say about our conviction in the values we claim to uphold?
Thank you. And I'll ask people to hold their applause. Thank you. Welcome. Please state your name and city you're from.
Hello, thank you. My name is Tom Martinez from Iowa City. With the federal shutdown now over and November SNAP benefits being distributed, the Johnson County Food Access Network, which is an organization of local food pantries, free meal sites, and other partner organizations, is concerned about a much deeper crisis looming for families in our community. While the shutdown captured headlines, a broader storm is brewing. Thousands of families relied on pantries, meal sites, and community fridges to fill the gap during this crisis. And even as SNAP resumes, we know the challenges are far from over. The federal reconciliation bill passed this summer dramatically restructured SNAP, including pushing several vulnerable communities off the program entirely, either through direct means or through administrative means like work requirements. More concerning, the reconciliation bill also threatens to upend SNAP entirely in the state of Iowa. If the state is unable to meet stricter accuracy guidelines, it could incur up to $50 million in penalties. This is a bill that the state, yeah, this is a cost the state is unlikely to fund. This could force the elimination of SNAP and shift the entire burden of hunger relief onto local communities, including Iowa City. Despite these challenges, the Food Access Network remains deeply proud of the community response during the shutdown. The anger, the frustration, and the pain that we've seen in our community are real. But so is the outpouring of support. Thousands of people in Johnson County have stepped up to volunteer, donate food and money, and to keep their neighbors fed. We are grateful, we are resilient, and with the continued support of our community and city governments, we will not stop fighting for every person's rights, basic rights to food. Thank you.
Welcome.
Yeah, thank you.
Please state your name and city you're from.
Ed Moreno, Iowa City. Good evening. My name is Ed Moreno. I am a member of Escuchamivos and the current director of Iowa LULAC, the League of United Latin American Citizens. LULAC is the nation's oldest and largest Latino civil rights organization. Founded in 1929, LULAC is committed to advancing the rights and opportunities of Latinos through advocacy, community building, and education. With a network of councils nationwide, LULAC remains steadfast in its mission to protect and empower millions of Latinos, contributing daily to America's prosperity. LULAC Councils 308 and 373 of Iowa City stand for the dignity of all persons and shares concern for the well-being of individuals and communities in Johnson County with Escuchamivos and other local organizations. In addition to the Iowa City's councils, Iowa LULAC has councils in communities across Iowa. Know your rights training for community members, businesses, school districts, and government agencies has been a focus. Protecting community members' civil rights through the adoption of sections of the proposed resolution is important because of what we know is harmful policy that is having an adverse impact on our communities. We assert detainment and deportation without due process are not legal and have filed multiple lawsuits in Iowa and the nation to stop wrongful immigration enforcement actions and voter suppression. We request the City of Iowa City and Johnson County work with us through the resolution section's intent. Thank you for your consideration, and please feel free to contact me with any questions. And thanks for the opportunity to share this public comment.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Welcome.
Hello, my name is Clara Reinan, and I live in Iowa City, Iowa. I'm here tonight as the unity chair for the Campaign to Organize Graduate Students, COGS, UE Local 896. Our union represents graduate workers on campus, including international students who are graduate workers. And as unity chair, it is my job to make sure that members of our union feel represented fairly and equitably. And this means that I work closely with our International Student Representative, Political Action Committee, and Department stewards, to name a few. COGS supports Escuchamivos's push for a Fourth Amendment resolution, and COGS urges the city to reaffirm the rights for all international students and immigrants, regardless of their documentation status, to call Iowa City home. Within our union on campus, it is evident the chilling effect that ICE has had. International students on campus do not feel safe and are anxious to engage with the union at all. Despite being members of our bargaining unit, many are afraid that participating in organizing will be seen as political and could result in their visas being revoked. Additionally, when asking administrators what to do if ICE appears outside of a classroom, their answer is essentially, call general counsel. As a TA myself, I am often nervous about what I would do if ICE were to knock on my classroom door. Despite having policy and procedure in place per the employee handbook on campus, without adequate training and opportunities to practice responses, it feels nearly impossible to be truly prepared. This example of the climate on campus illustrates the necessity and benefit that passing a strong Fourth Amendment resolution would provide for the city as well. That's because providing city employees with the resources they need to be prepared and effective is important. And this is a way you can protect city staff by making sure they feel comfortable and prepared. That's going to make them feel more comfortable doing their jobs, focusing on the task at hand. Many of the suggestions from Escuchamivos in their original resolution would be very easy to take and implement, particularly having signs in public areas with information about the type of warrants ICE need to have and other information about responses. The city could even provide an easy-access online PDF document with signage and suggested training materials for private businesses to use. I would hope that that's something that the university could even adopt for graduate workers and other staff to use. And finally, I just wanted to touch on the fact that last spring, our union successfully negotiated the first raise above legal minimum for the first time since collective bargaining rights were stripped. That's because we continued to show up, and even though it was risky and made people nervous, we did it anyway, and it worked. And the city should do the same thing with this Fourth Amendment resolution. Taking a risk is worth it if it's going to make community members feel safe. Thank you.
No one, Abu Isa, Iowa City. I want to thank our hosts on this land here today, especially recognizing the natives as the host for all of us. We are all immigrants, and we can all be expelled if they choose to. And this is what ICE has been trying to do. ICE has become a symbol of immigration system that is not only broken but harmful. It's an agency that has separated families, detained children, and carried raids and torn apart the communities at workplace and at homes. Too often, it has operated at minimal oversight and maximum fear. Fear is that what they are striving for, and this is what we are asking the City of Iowa City to provide a reaction to this kind of operation. The city have offices, the attorney's office, the civil rights office, the human rights office can work with those communities ahead of time. Some of those people can be legal if their paper has been filed in time. And they might need help because they don't know all the rules and the regulations. And I expect the city council to work with these communities ahead of time and activate the available resources of the City of Iowa City to help our communities in Iowa City. And that is something you guys can take the lead on. We don't have to prompt you to do that. Also, I guess, our community is being attacked. The Muslim community today, the governor of Texas has declared that CARE is a terrorist organization, which is a civil rights organization. So we've been working in this country for a long time, and now there has been additional attacks on additional communities. If we don't stop the buck here, it will keep creeping and attacking more communities in Iowa City. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
My name is Erica Thinkin. I'm born and raised Iowa Cityan. You have heard many reasons and from countless community members to pass this 4A resolution. I would like to pose the question to everyone here and let it be seen online as well. Why haven't you voted yet? I think that there's a lot behind that question for everyone to consider.
Thank you. Welcome. Please state your name and city you're from.
Hello, my name is Abigail Abigail Escatell. I'm from Iowa City. I am an up-and-coming scholar at the University of Iowa and PhD candidate, and I'm here to speak as a concerned citizen. While Native American Heritage Proclamation is warranted, we understand that institutional recognition means nothing when our brothers and sisters are getting hunted in the streets in front of their children, spouses, friends, neighbors, and complete strangers. Let us not forget that Ronald Reagan gave us Martin Luther King Day as a national holiday. Black Lives Matter protests in the summer of 2020 gave us Juneteenth as a national holiday, and we're still here. Let not these seemingly progressive proclamations deter us from meaningful demands for social justice. I stand before you to urge Iowa City to take a bold and principled step to adopt a due process and safety resolution affirming Fourth Amendment protections, especially for indigenous migrants and all others seeking safety and dignity. We know that Iowa's law currently prohibits formal sanctuary city policies under Chapter 27A requiring cooperation with federal immigration enforcement. But that does not prevent us from affirming our values and creating local protections that strengthen trust, safety, and inclusion. Across the country, cities have adopted measures that do not violate state law, yet still send clear messages. Everyone belongs. Both over-compliance and general indifference are harmful stances and unacceptable responses to this moment. We need leaders who rise to the occasion and stand firmly for the people. Why is this urgent? Indigenous migrants, many fleeing violence, climate disasters, and systemic oppression face unique vulnerabilities that were not of their own making. We are living in the afterlives of slavery and settler colonial legacies, capitalist colonial interests, and what seems to be a damn heiress for white supremacist pride. Right now, we are at a critical juncture where we must decide for whom to stand alongside. Declaring Iowa City as a sort of sanctuary is not just a legal designation, it is a moral commitment. It means investing in community-based resources, legal aid, mutual aid, community oversight over police of all kinds, civilian protections for those willing to protect people, and language access, housing support, and partnerships for indigenous and migrant organization. It means ensuring that no one is denied city services because of immigration status.
Welcome. Please state your name and city you're from.
Hi, I'm Kim Long, Iowa City. Thanks for hearing us tonight. I live in Iowa City. I grew up in Solon. I moved back to Iowa City from Seattle to care for my mother through dementia at the end of her life and to raise my daughter in a place where we have community. I'm going to try to get through this, which in these times is maybe the biggest thing keeping me here. I am a trained OR nurse. I worked on the front lines during the pandemic with an infant at home. I'm also now a clinical social work therapist who cries, as well as an artist. I know some of you here, and if I don't yet, there's probably one degree of separation between us. We're all trying to do our best, and I'm really sick of this word, unprecedented times. It's so hard to know what is the right way to help or which choice helps or harms. When I read the requests in the Fourth Amendment Resolution, this kind of preparation feels a lot like medical world preparing. At every hospital I've worked, we have run drill after drill for how to respond to codes of all kinds so that everyone knows their role, they know where to be, and they know what they're able to do in a worst-case scenario. We understand that it keeps our community safer if we plan and prepare for the unthinkable. The other piece that comes up for me is from my own growing up. My siblings and I were all adopted from Korea in their early 80s. We were part of the over 300,000 Korean children sent all over the world, but mostly to the US, following the Korean War, a practice that is under international scrutiny, an investigation for human rights violations. I was raised by a white family in an all-white community, so I experienced the feeling of being invisible and also hyper-visible all of my childhood. I was never fully a part of the fabric of Solon and always viewed as an outsider despite only knowing rural Iowa culture. When I was learning about the civil rights movement as a kid, I remember looking at the horrifying photos of dogs hunting down humans, of fire hoses turned-on bodies, of the police brutality. And I asked my parents, who lived through that time, what did you do when this was happening? What did you do? How did you help? And their answer was, that wasn't our fight. What could we have done? What I know now is that what I was asking was, how would you protect me if people in hoods or with dogs or batons came and hunted me down, tore me away? What would you do? And the question I know my own child will ask me one day will be the same. When people in masks with zip ties came and abducted people, when kids were ripped from their beds and forced into U-hauls in the middle of the night, what did you do? How did you help? I am one of the more fortunate international adoptees in that my parents completed my paperwork for citizenship. Many adopted children do not have citizenship in this country despite being brought here as infants by US citizen parents. November is Adoption Awareness Month, and parents often ask me, how can I support my children better? Which foods or holidays or books should we offer? And my response is, see them.
Thank you. Welcome.
My name is Mary Grabot, and I'm from Iowa City. And I see we all have problems with our government. But I really came here to congratulate the people who voted on November 4th, 2025, because that signified the first shot in American Revolution II. Unlike American Revolution I, this battle was fought with the ballot, not the bullet, proving people united cannot be defeated. The cause of Revelation II is the fact that President Trump sold the U.S. out to the Zionists, Miriam Adelson, and Elon Musk, AIPAC, and the oligarchs to win 2024. He covered his ass by making any criticism of Israel criminal behavior treason punishable by deportation. Trump using antisemitism as a cloaking device stripped away First Amendment freedom of speech and press. Congress and six Supreme Court justices are part of the Zionist bargain. The American people, both Jew and Gentile, suffer under Trump's betrayal. Why Trump uses the word antisemitism? Words matter because they can inflict pain and control behavior. Trump uses antisemitism to keep Americans docile. Antisemitism recalls the Holocaust 1.0, where the Nazis demonized the Jews and attempted to eradicate them from Europe. Holocaust 2.0 is Gaza. No one wants to think of himself or herself as a racist or antisemitic. Trump and his company of Orwellian thought police use antisemitism against your examining what you know to be deception. Lies, fear, and shame keep Americans' mouths shut, but truth, when thrown to the ground, will rise up. The Republican House and Senate live in fear of losing support, funding from the Zionists and oligarchs for their political campaigns. What can we do? We must continue to vote. As commander-in-chief, we can't outgun Trump, but we, the American people, can outvote him, one man, one woman, one vote. Republicans are sure that by January, we will forget about the suffering, the government shut down, and vote them back into office. Keep a track of all government wrongdoing. Register, vote, knock on doors. And please, Iowa, the city council, I'm pleading again for a full-time maintenance man in Iowa City Public Library. Things are improving, but they need additional help, and we need bus shelters now. Winter is coming, and people need to be protected. You know, this is our local government, this is our blue city in this red state. So I'm expecting the council to look out for the people. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and thanks to everyone that gave comments today. We are going to move on to item number nine, which is planning and zoning matters. Nine A, preliminary final plat for Cole Hill. Resolution approving the preliminary and final plat of Cole Hill subdivision, Iowa City, Iowa. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second. Alter.
All right, and welcome, Danielle.
Thank you, Mayor. Danielle Sisman, Neighborhood and Development Services. This is a resolution for preliminary and final plat. It's a single-lot subdivision with an existing single-family home on it. It was part of a larger parcel of land, formerly part of the Forest View and North Dubuque LLC Development. This is just to create a single lot around that existing single-family home to allow it to be sold to the homeowner at Cole. It's a 2.84 acre portion shown here in the white outline. Like I said, this land was previously part of a development proposal that's not come to fruition at this point. It was rezoned in 2019 and pretty much stopped at that point. This preliminary plat would create that single-family lot, allow for right-of-way dedication for eventual extension of Algonquin Street to connect through this area and through the undeveloped land to the east and northeast eventually. It maintains that OPD zoning that was in place before, which has a variety of CZA conditions that don't really apply to this land but are being carried forward just simply because of its existing zoning. They could be rewritten or overwritten with a future rezoning, which honestly, we anticipate this land around it to go through another rezoning when redevelopment proposals pick back up. As far as reviewing this particular prelim and final plat, the review criteria are compliance with the comprehensive plan, which there is a North District Plan and a future land use map in the general plan. This is in compliance with the existing comprehensive plan, which really anticipates conservation design, single-family, but as I said, no development being proposed at this time, just simply creating a lot for the existing family home. We reviewed the subdivision standards that were relevant since no development is proposed, none of the sensitive areas are being impacted, single-family homes do have an exemption anyway. That extension of Algonquin would eventually include both the roadway and the sidewalks needed for that, and we did look at open space education, which there would be none because of the no creation of new additional units here. So as I said, this land was part of a previous rezoning that's not really relevant at this time, simply creating the single-family lot to transfer ownership. This is the prelim and final plat step. There is a subdividers agreement that lays out some of the conditions and triggers for when the roadway would be installed. It ties it to building permits for this site or eventual redevelopment of the land connected to it. So we've covered the city's interest in ensuring that right-of-way gets developed in the future when it's needed. The Planning and Zoning Commission saw this one on their agenda on November 5th and by a meeting of six to zero concurred with staff's recommendation for approval. I'm happy to answer questions.
Don't hear any questions. Thank you. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're online, please raise your virtual hand. If you're present, please come forth. See anyone online or present in the council chambers, council discussions. Roll call, please.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmson.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Sala.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Wyling.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number 10 is our regular formal agenda. 10A is downtown SMID renewal, ordinance amending Title III, finance, taxation, and fees of the city code to reestablish the Iowa City Downtown Self-Supervised Municipal Improvement District pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 386 Code of Iowa, and provided for the establishment of an operation fund and the levy of an annual tax in connection therewith. And I'm going to open the public hearing, and welcome, Rachel.
Hi, Mayor and City Council. Rachel Kilberg-Varley, Economic Development Coordinator. So given this is probably repeat information from many of you, but since this only happens once every 10 years or so, I thought it would be worthwhile to just review, so I'll be brief, but wanted to just give you kind of some context about the downtown district's SMID's renewal and expansion efforts and the process. So first, what is a SMID? It's that self-supported municipal improvement district, which is a self-imposed taxing district, which is created by the property owners. Certain percentage of property owners agree to impose that additional tax upon themselves in order to provide funding for additional enhanced services within whatever that SMID area is. Iowa code authorizes SMIDs, and I'll walk through kind of what that process looks like to create or renew one. So the item before you is for the renewal of the Iowa City Downtown District SMID. That was established originally in 2011. It was renewed in 2015, and that renewal will expire this coming June 30th of 2026. Right now, there's SMID levies, so that tax rate that the property owners have imposed upon themselves is the $2. It was $2 per $1,000 of taxable value for the first five years of the current authorization, and then $2.50 for the last four, five, I'm sorry. And then the SMID itself is kind of that legal entity, the legal taxing entity, but the Iowa City Downtown District is the 501(c)(6) organization which manages the SMID. So included in your agenda packet was the petition submitted by the Iowa City Downtown District for their renewal. The map on your screen shows what those current boundaries are, which is that light gray outline, and then the red would be the proposed boundary. So you see an expansion of their new area. Their petition proposes to extend the current SMID for another 10 years, so that would start July 1 of 2026, when the current one ends. And then it requests a levy rate of $2.50 per $1,000 of assessed value for the first seven years, so it would stay the same as it is now for the first seven years. And then for the last year, the last three years, they have the option to increase that to $2.75 if the Board of Directors determines that it's necessary. They'll use the revenue that's collected through this levy to help fund their activities, so that includes operations like business support activities, marketing, advertising, programming, special events, festivals, and other place-making activities, physical improvements, so their enhanced cleaning, lighting improvements, their seasonal decor, signage, banners, landscaping, public art, and then, of course, their staff to actually carry out their work. So in many ways, the petition they've submitted is kind of a continuation of what they're doing and also an amplification of that. As I mentioned before, Iowa code lays out what that process looks like to create or renew a SMID. So the first step is for the property owners to decide they want that SMID, and then they sign a petition to the city declaring that. We received that petition on September 15th of 2025. After that, staff reviewed to verify that it contained all the requirements that Iowa Code Section 386.3 requires, and that it contained signatures of at least 25% of the property owners, representing at least 25% of the assessed value of the proposed district. After staff completed that review and verification, we notified you through your October 7th meeting agenda packet, and then that was forwarded on to planning and zoning, where they were required to complete an evaluative report on the merit and feasibility of the proposed SMID. They completed that at their October 15th meeting, and then you set a public hearing on October 20th. The city clerk's office posted that public hearing notice as required, also mailed a copy by certified mail to all the affected property owners at least 15 days before the public hearing, and having satisfied all of those steps, the ordinance now, before you would be your first consideration for the renewal of the SMID. Three readings will be required to establish the district. The final cannot occur earlier than 30 days after the public hearing, so we cannot expedite this item. And then the final adoption will require a three-fourths vote or six votes. If a certain percentage of property owners were to protest, then you would need to have unanimous vote, and the state code does outline, or does establish, a mechanism for challenging the petition if there were a percentage of property owners who wished to do so. That's all I had. Any questions?
I just had a couple questions out of curiosity. I was wondering what kind of law or limitation there is on what type of tax the SMID can impose on itself? Is there like a cap? Is there a minimum? Or I was just curious about that.
There is. Let me look here, unless Eric knows off the top of his head.
That's 5%.
So no worries if it is something that you can't dig up right now.
I think it's something that certainly can be circled back to Council Wyline.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, apologies, we don't have that answer. We can get back to you.
That's 100% okay. And I was also going to ask about the 25%. So in order for the SMID to be established, it needs 25% of all of the property owners, as well as that has to equal a minimum of 25% of the overall value of the area? Is that correct?
Of the assessed value, yep.
Assessed value. And I just want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. So if that 25% threshold is reached, the tax is imposed upon all who are in the district, not just those 25%? Correct?
Correct. Not residential properties, but the rest.
Yes, yes, not residential. And so if somebody, let's say 25% of the property owners, commercial property owners, buy, you know, businesses, sign a petition, but that 25%, it's smaller businesses, so they don't reach that 25% value, then they can't proceed with the application.
Are you asking if a unique owner, if owners could have multiple properties?
I'm asking if like 25% of businesses in the SMID can somehow not reach the threshold of 25% of the assessed value. So there could be one person who owns, or one entity that owns as much as 25%. So them alone could reach that value, but there are 25% of the properties that couldn't reach that number. Am I making any sense?
I think it's a possibility, yes. Yes, I think it's a possibility, but...
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes. We're going to have Betsy Potter come up and answer that.
Betsy Potter with the Iowa City Downtown District. So there's two thresholds that you have to complete. 25% of unique owners, so that can be any value, and then 25% of a total assessed value that had to be met. So we met 38% and 45% in those categories. So to answer your question, they do that so that it's not just one property owner or two, three property owners that can implement the SMID on smaller properties or larger properties. Does that make sense?
Yes, and I have an additional question.
Yes, that 100% answers my question.
Okay.
Answered mine, too.
Oh, good.
So can you repeat the 38% was for the distinct property?
Unique owners, yep. So we received 38% of the unique owners, and then 40, I think it was a little over 45% of assessed value.
Evaluation, okay.
That was my question.
And is that, does 100% of people participate, or you just get far beyond what you need?
The like legal threshold is 25% for each, so we like obviously just wanted to get more than we needed to.
But you shouldn't assume that if there's 38% say yes, then 62% said no. That's incorrect assumption is what I'm getting at.
Yeah, and there's a number of properties, you know, that couldn't sign. The city owns a large portion of properties, and the city can't sign the petition, for example.
Thank you.
I'm not sure. Oh, I'm sorry.
My questions were, sorry about that. My questions were just specifically about curiosity. I think this is great. I just wanted to make sure I understood all of the operations correctly, so thank you.
Staff has been frantically searching for the maximum tax rate, and I believe we're not able to find it because I don't think there is one. I will certainly circle back if I find that that's incorrect.
All right. Thank you, Eric.
So it was helpful for us to ask a couple of questions, give you a little time between.
Any other questions by council? Hearing non, thank you both. All right, and we're going to move on to the public discussion. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're online, please raise your virtual hand, and if you're present, please come forth. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Welcome.
My name is Mary Grabot. I live here in Iowa City, and I went to my doctor today and came back, and I took the seats bus, and so the seats bus take you on a circular route because you got to pick up people so they can go to work, the disabled people. But the problem was, I looked at Corleville, and Corleville is eating our lunch, and we had better do something because it's no excuse. You look, they got every restaurant in the world and everything, and you're looking around. What happened to us? Corleville used to be a place with cheap rent, and the only thing that had gone for them was the Corleville Mall. And I didn't like the mall because I get a feeling that the walls are closing. But Iowa City had better sit down, look at these businesses, and do something because I hate to see the city fade, and we are. Iowa City, the blue city, is the attraction for the whole state, but if something's not done about it, because at one time, it was one member of city council, I remember... I remember, and Vonmar was in the mall. And he moved to Corleville and took Vonmar with him. So we gotta, you know, weed out the traitors and get it together, and get financially together, or we won't matter at all. I mean, we had protests, and you listen to people, but you have to have finances to do what you want to do and to make the city progressive. I'm not saying the city's not progressive. I'm just saying, I don't know, I think I remember when you first got this SMID thing, it only took, took like one or two blocks. But something has to be done. And Corleville just can't kill us, because this is what's gonna happen, because Iowa City, we depended on Walmart on one end to tack the city down. And on the other end, I don't think, that used to be Sycamore Mall, it changes its name every two years and doesn't seem to make any progress. Something has to be done. And I hope something will be done, and I hope I know what I'm talking about. Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm Clara Reinen from Iowa City. I'm just here as myself right now, not as the COGS Unity Chair like I was earlier. I just wanted to say I think the SMIDS are really cool. That was something that before I started to get involved in like local politics, I didn't really know what it was. And one thing I heard a lot from community members as I was, you know, running for City Council, is just that like a lot of people don't understand how those sorts of things work. And so one thing that I heard from folks while I was running is just that like, if there was an easy way to find information about what these kinds of things are, it would be a lot easier for general community members who aren't business owners or who aren't located in a SMID to know what they are. And so I think, renew the SMIDS, yes, but then in addition to that, if there was even just like a little glossary section or something on the city's website where folks could go to learn more about SMIDS, I think that would be really useful, because I think it is a cool partnership between the community and the city and business owners. And so I just think that that's something that the city could do for a lot of different programs, but in particular, I think SMIDS would be really worthwhile to make sure we're doing more public education about. Thanks.
Welcome.
Hi, good evening. My name is Karen Cubby. I own a business in the new, in the renewal area, so I'm very excited to be involved. And I just wanted to say in a different way that the SMID legislation makes sure that not just small property owners can control this process, and not just large property owners, but we have to collaborate together to get to that 25% of signatures that represent that value and the unique owners. And we had owners coming to the current SMID saying we want to be part of this. We feel like we're downtown. We want to avail ourselves of the marketing, the safety, the cleaning, the services, the programs of the SMID. So the new boundary really reflects that, those requests that came into the SMID. It also reflects the feel of where downtown boundaries actually are. So there were lots of signatures from property owners in the new area, and I wish I could have a map to show you all of those signatures, but that was really important to us. There was an exponential number of unique owners between the new boundaries and, or the old boundaries and the new boundaries. And so getting to 38% was really a big deal to us, that so many people were interested. And part of the beauty of the SMID, a lot of things came together at the same time. The Downtown District, the 21 ordinance, and the 500-foot rule work together to ensure that downtown is activated from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 a.m., and that we are not skewed in just day life or nightlife. And so this broad activation is a real important value to us. The other thing that's so important to me personally is for people to acknowledge that the downtown is such a big proportion of what brings money into the general front that allows the city to do more than just mandated things, but to do all those things we want you to do. Civil rights, human rights, education, sustainability, and other protections and programs for the city. So about one-third of the SMID's budget comes from the SMID tax. The other comes from generous donations from the University of Iowa, from sponsorships, from ticket sales. And one of our challenges for the new boundaries, assuming that you vote yes tonight, is for us to make sure that we're hearing from all of those new property owners, especially the multifamily property owners. What is it that you need from the SMID that we don't already know about? So our job will be to ask the question, listen to the answers, and then incorporate that into our services and programs. So I hope you all vote yes, and thanks for that.
Thank you. All right, seeing no one else? Oh, come on, come on. Yes.
So as probably as...
Is your name and city you're from? Welcome.
I'm Katie Gerlach with Greater Iowa City, Inc., and I'm a resident of Iowa City and also a self-proclaimed SMID geek, so I have to come once a decade when this happens. Oliver, I would love to speak with you more about Iowa Code in Chapter 386, because I think it's probably one of the weirdest written chapters. But it does have those intricacies and interesting points you identified, and so it's fun to nerd out on that chapter. But I'm here today to speak in support of the SMID on behalf of Greater Iowa City, Inc., your community and economic development organization, and Local Chamber of Commerce. This renewal aligns with our mission to strengthen the regional economy and create vibrant neighborhoods and districts. And I think it's important to note that when you look at the vibrancy of downtown, it did not happen by accident. 10 years ago, downtown looked like a very different place. 15 years ago, downtown looked like a different place. And so we have to remember it didn't happen by chance. It's a quiet engine humming in the background that we would only miss if it wasn't here. And so we're here today to speak in support and hope that you'll vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no one else? Counsel, I'm gonna close the public hearing. All right, counsel, could I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Harmson.
Second, Sally.
All right. A council discussion.
Really exciting. I'm very, very excited, especially because we're going to expand and like businesses outside that like square or what you call it, is will be added more to the, you know, to this one. Yeah, I'm very excited.
Yeah. I'll just second what Mayor Protam said, especially with the boundaries expanding, and that the people who have opted in and have said, please, let's work on this to expand the SMID, are reflecting sort of the feel of downtown. But I think to perhaps Ms. Gravitt's point, that it's going to look and feel even more like downtown in more of downtown, as the SMID sort of has that quiet thrum, right? And as the building continues, and as the shape of it sort of starts to build and grow. So I'm really excited for this, and kudos. I know how hard it is to stand this up, to activate it, to keep it going and growing, and now for the next 10 years. So kudos to everyone who's participated and has made this happen. It's hard work, and this is great. I'm really excited.
Probably gonna have to start again for another eight years with that thing, that piece of it, yes. Nice job, and welcome back to the SMID.
Yay!
Thank you all for your work and for blowing past the 25% thresholds, because I do, I do think that really is indicative of the wider support that's out there, and I think it's important for us to see and hear and know that. So, very exciting. Thank you.
I'll just pile on. I appreciate the work that the Downtown District does and see the value in it. And every year, there's something new that comes up, and the most recent addition has been the Block by Block Initiative. And they just add that on top of the things they're already doing, and I think it's been a huge success. So I can't wait to see the next thing that's innovative and interesting that comes from the Downtown District.
No pressure.
There's something new Friday night, right? So...
Yeah.
Can't add much more, except excited to vote on this for the living room of our city. So, all right, with that being said...
I was just gonna...
Yes, the voice in the sky.
I'm gonna pile on, guys. Katie, yes, I would absolutely love to meet with you and nerd out about this code. I've tried to read it, and it's hard. So I would love to talk with an expert, or someone who's dabbled in it for so long. And I'm, especially with Lost being passed, and the opportunity that come from that, this being the center for so much of our sales in Iowa City, you know, just this investment, and it, you know, it works together so well. And also, so many of the same people on this team for the SMID were involved in the Lost campaign, which overwhelmingly in all three big cities, bigger cities, North Liberty, Corleville, Iowa City, and Tivent. So thank you all so much for all your work on that as well. And, you know, I'm really excited to see what, you know, especially since we have, we're gonna be seeing an increase a little bit in how much is collected. I would like, you know, I think we all know that our downtown ambassadors, our sanitation workers downtown, do just, just such an amazing job, and everyone in the community loves them, and they make our downtown so clean and awesome. So I'm excited to see with this investment how we can help repay them. And, yeah, so I'm excited to vote yes on this and see what can happen.
Roll call, please.
Harmson?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Sala?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Y-line?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Motion passed at 7 to 0. Could I get a motion to accept, to pass, to accept correspondence?
So moved, Alter.
Second, Sally.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed at 7 to 0.
Yay!
We're gonna move on to item number 10B, Parking Ticket Appeal Process and Towing Empowerment Procedures. Ordinance amending Title IX and Title Motor Vehicles and Traffic. Chapter 5 entitled Parking Meter Zones and Parking Lots. Section 6 entitled Penalties. Parking Tickets to provide for an updated and streamlined process to appeal parking tickets in Chapter 9 entitled Towing and Empowerment Procedures. Section 4 entitled Empowerment for Accumulated Parking Violations. To increase the amount of accumulated parking fines, the result in adding a vehicle to the empowered list from $50 to $150. This is the second consideration, and staff is requesting expedited action.
I move that the rule requiring that ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting in which is to be finally passed be suspended, that the second consideration vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Move by Mo?
Second, Burgess.
All right, anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're online, please raise your virtual hand. Seeing no one online or in person. Council discussion. Roll call, please.
Mo?
Yes.
Sala?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Y-line?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Motion passed at 7 to 0. Could I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So move, Sally.
Second, Mo.
Roll call, please.
Sala?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Y-line?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Motion passed at 7 to 0. Item C, Ordinance Adopting and Incorporating SUDAS Design Manual and Specifications. Ordinance amending Title XV, XVI, and XVIII of the City Code to adopt and incorporate the SUDAS Design Manual and Specifications. General Supplemento Design Standards and Specifications, and City of Iowa City Design Supplement and Specifications. Could I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved, Mo.
Second, Burgess.
Public discussion at this time. Anyone want to discuss this item? If you're online, please raise your virtual hand. If you're in the council chambers, please come forth. Seeing no one, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Teague?
Yes.
Y-line?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Sala?
Yes.
Motion passed at 7 to 0. We're on to item number 11, which is Announcements of Vacancies New. And I just want to make note that all of our board, commissions, and committee applications can be found at the city website, and it is a long one, but it is in our agenda for folks to see. So 11A, Announcements of Vacancies New. We have Climate Action Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment through December 31, 2027. Applications must be received by 5:00 p.m. Tuesday, December 30, 2025. Could I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved, Alter.
Second, Burgess.
Second, Y-line.
All right, well, even though you're, you were probably delayed on our end, I'm gonna give it to Burgess and to Y-line.
Man, I was trying to sneak in there, so thank you.
All right.
Just cut out.
We're gonna do item number 12, which is Announcements of Vacancies Previous. 12A is gonna be Planning and Zoning Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term, and applications must be received by 5:00 p.m. Tuesday, December 2, 2025.
Mayor, I don't think we, you had a motion in the second, but I don't think you had the vote on the motion to accept correspondence there.
Oh. All right, I'll backtrack. So we had it by Burgess and then by Y-line. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed at 7 to 0. Yes, that was missing. All right, we're gonna move on to, we're gonna continue with our Announcements of Vacancies Previous. Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Board of Appeals, one vacancy to fill a five-year term for a licensed electrician. Board of Appeals, one vacancy for HVAC professionals to fill an unexpired term. Historic Preservation Commission, one vacancy for Brown Street representative to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, one vacancy to fill for Jefferson Street representative for a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, one vacancy for Wallon Avenue representative to fill a three-year term. Vacancies will remain open until filled, and we're at item number 13, City Council Information as, at this time.
Just a reminder that what the last park donation drive-through is tomorrow at Weatherby, 4 to 6. So anybody's on the South Side, come donate some stuff.
All right, we're gonna move on to item number 14, which is Report on Items from City Staff. City Manager's Office?
Nothing tonight.
City Attorney?
I do have something I'm looking forward to on Friday, going with a couple of other attorneys in my office, to the Iowa Municipal Attorneys Association Annual Seminar in Johnston. It's a great time, and it's very focused, which is wonderful for us.
City Clerk? All right, we're at item number 15. Could I get a motion to adjourn, please?
I would be happy to do that. Move.
Second?
Move by Sally, second by Burgess. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, we waited for you.
Thank you.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everybody.
See you tomorrow.